We're good.
Good.
Yeah.
I'd like to call this Tuesday, April first, two thousand twenty-five, Board of Commissioners of Meeker County, session to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Is there any additions or corrections to the board agenda as it was printed?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion carries. County Administrator Letson, would you please go over the consent agenda?
Happily. We have approval of the March eighteenth Board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, approval of the two thousand twenty-five Safe for Sure Agreement, and that's the consent agenda.
Hey, does anyone have any questions about anything on the consent agenda or wish to move it to the main agenda?
Mr. Chair, quickly, that's the same people we've always used, Peterson, I think, or whatever, Chad. Couldn't read his writing on there. Yeah. Alright, that's what I thought. Thank you. They've been with us a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, and do a good job, I think. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Van Art. All those, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. Lisa, you're becoming a regular here.
Yeah. Good morning, Lisa Grafantin, Meeker County EDA, here to discuss a potential allocation of funds from your statewide affordable housing aid. Just to give you a little bit of background, in the two thousand twenty-three legislature, they made the decision to provide aid allocation to each county within the state of Minnesota and then also cities over a population of ten thousand dollars of funding. And that then it basically gives you local control to make decisions on how to use those funds for housing projects that meet the eligibility criteria. The funds were really a good way, you know, sometimes we have a hard time competing at the statewide level for funds, so this provided some nice local control to be able to allocate funds to housing project. In your packet, there's kind of a variety of eligible activities that are outlined. Again, the number of eligible activities is pretty broad in terms of it can be provided for emergency types of rental assistance, financially supporting nonprofit housing organizations, market rate residential under certain restrictions, so there's a variety of categories or restrictions that have to be met for it to be eligible for that. And then anything really that relates to construction, acquisition, rehabilitation of housing projects. Demolition is also eligible, but if you demolish a unit, you have to replace it with an existing one, so you can't just use this as a demolition program. And then refinancing, interest rates reduction, it can be used as permanent financing, construction. So again, a whole host of eligible activities that the funds can be used for. And then in addition, the guidelines also provide some additional restrictions around income guidelines, accessibility requirements, and also requires that affordable housing is prioritized in using the funds. There are time limitations for the use of these funds, so they're not something that we can pool and then sit on forever. They did put some requirements in there as to when the funds have to be used. In terms of the amount that Meeker County received, you'll see there in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, we received a hundred thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars, which was the same amount then received in two thousand twenty-four. And then in two thousand twenty-five, the allocation is set to go down. It's roughly a little over forty percent of that original amount. And then payments are received by the county in July and December of each year. And the current balance that the county has is just a little bit over a hundred and fifty-one thousand. To date, what the county has used the funds for is to enter the category of financial support to nonprofit housing providers, and that has gone to the Meeker County Housing and Redevelopment Authority in their efforts to preserve and provide affordable housing here in Meeker County. Back in December, I started meeting with two organizations here within the county that were really interested in doing some additional affordable housing work. They were the Litchfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority and then also Habitat for Humanity. So just kind of starting with Habitat for Humanity, I'm sure you're all kind of aware of their model, but basically it's a sweat equity, get the families involved in kind of building their own house. They focus on homeownership opportunities and creating kind of that first-time home for people to be able to build wealth and their equity in their home. They've been researching both infill lots and then also bare lots at a reasonable price here within the community and have identified some opportunities. And their interest is to build five homes over the next five years in Litchfield. They would target the homes to be three-bedroom, two-bath homes, and they would have that target price of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand to three hundred and twenty, which, again, I know seems high, but that is entry level in today's costs and in housing market. We've experienced that. We've partnered with Number One to do some entry-level homes in their nature's edge, and those were kind of, when we started that four years ago, were at that kind of two eighty, two ninety, and now our, the low three hundreds is basically, that is kind of where entry-level homes are coming in. The size of the home would be roughly a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. They've got a couple of different designs that they work with, so they don't necessarily use the same design, but they've got a few different ones that they can work with. And they would target households at eighty percent or less of area median income. So it does align nicely with the statewide affordable housing aid, which I'm going to call SAHA from here on, because that's a little bit shorter, but it aligns nicely with the SAHA regulations in terms of meeting that income affordability. What their request was is forty-five thousand that would be used as a zero percent deferred or grant for a five-year term that would allow them to revolve the funds. So they would use some of those funds to help buy the lots, get the homes constructed, sell them, and then continue to revolve, and again, as I said, build one home per year over the next five years. Their goal is to start right away this summer, in two thousand twenty-five, and then they would have roughly like a hundred and twenty they build for each of their homes. So that's just kind of a little bit about their timelines. And just kind of as a quick reminder, how we've kind of looked at this is because the EDA does have some housing resources, and we've done a lot of underwriting of housing projects. We kind of have projects come to us. We really dive deep into their numbers. Is this a feasible project? Is it a solid organization? Is what they're asking for a reasonable request? So that's kind of what we've been doing the last two to three months, is a lot of that underwriting work to make sure that these are our projects, and then to figure out which path is best in terms of EDA funds versus the SAHA funds, or maybe other resources to ensure that we're using our funds in the most cost-effective and economical way. The second project that we've been working with is through the Litchfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and they really would like to expand their portfolio of housing units that they have, but all of their funding is restricted by the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development related to their Lincoln Apartments project. So really, they don't have, because they don't levy, they don't have any way to really kind of start a housing project because those funds are restricted. And so our goal, again, a levy would be an option for them to be able to acquire some funds to do some of this work, but we thought as long as we have some of these SAHA resources, it's best to use those for eligible projects versus going the levy path and putting that on the residence of the county. So that's kind of the approach that we're looking at for this one. But the opportunity came about for them to be able to purchase a site here in Litchfield at a very reasonable cost to look at a future multifamily development for their organization. Their total financing need for their project is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which would include their land acquisition costs and then soft costs for the project as well. In terms of how we're proposing the project funding for that, is that the Meeker County SAHA funding would provide ninety-five thousand. The EDA has met already, and we've committed twenty thousand dollars to the project. And then we would also like to see the City of Litchfield be a participant in this project as well. That has not gone in front of them yet. We're looking to schedule that for one of their April meetings, so that would be pending in terms of their contribution. And so each entity will essentially decide, we've got three different entities working on this, how they would want to structure their financing. Because the HRA doesn't have the ability to repay debt service, what we're looking to do is to structure these as more zero percent deferred loans for a reasonable term, which we've determined, the EDA determined to be five years, which would give them enough time to develop their, assemble a development team, assemble their project financing, and then get a project started. So that's kind of why we looked at that five-year period. And then if they would be able to secure, or look to secure some Minnesota housing funding, we potentially then, like the EDA talked about, we would forgive our funds as part of it because they would be required at some point to have some local match if they sought outside resources as well. If the HRA would not be able to assemble that team and get the financing and get the project started, the land would then revert back to the EDA and then the other entities involved that would establish their funds as a zero percent deferred loan. And so that would allow us to recoup our original investment that we had within it, but then it also would give us the opportunity, as maybe the city and the EDA slash county, to really collaborate on, you know, okay, if the HRA is not going to use the site, what is the next best use for that site, and to really be able to guide some development there. So we saw that was a positive of the project, to be able to do that. Since the EDA is a county entity, you know, our suggestion in kind of looking at the financing would be to provide the SAHA funds as a grant, because then you would still have the EDA as a county entity involved in that, having that loan for that five-year period of time. And then we could work directly kind of with the city once the five years ended, if they weren't developed the site, to then look at kind of what the next steps would be. And then too, because, and the other thing to keep in mind is with your SAHA funding is that, you know, if you lend out that SAHA funding and it comes back, it is still SAHA funding. So it doesn't ever lose the restrictions when it's lent out. And then just kind of lastly with the HRA, the other thing too that we've done is I've identified there's a really good opportunity for them through the Minnesota Housing Partnership called the Emerging Developer Training Program. So what we're going to look to do is to guide them through a really one-on-one training program that's going to help them through that development process as well. So not in addition to like the land, but also giving them the technical assistance they need to make the project successful. In terms of the financial impact, as I mentioned, the current balance of the SAHA funding for the county is just a little bit over a hundred and fifty-one thousand. The request for the SAHA funding would be to provide forty-five thousand dollars to Habitat, and then ninety-five thousand to the HRA for a total of a hundred and forty thousand. So this would still leave a balance in there of eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And then the county would also have your two payments coming in two thousand twenty-five of forty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which would leave you a year in balance of fifty-three thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. So there would still be funds in there for future projects as well. So in terms, so I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions that you have on either projects or the funding structure or SAHA in general.
We have a question for our two commissioners who are on that board. You're recommending this after pending this?
Yeah, this, well, we've talked about it. I mean, this has been a kind of a couple-month project or whatever to get.
Okay.
Yeah. So yes, short answer, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is there, so this is for the Litchfield HRA. Is there, would there be any benefit to collaborating with the Meeker County HRA? Could that open up more Minnesota housing funding, just extra people? Would that be beneficial?
Potentially. And I know the two, I think the two HRAs from my discussions with each of them, I think they work really well together, and they have a lot of the discussions around that piece. And so, you know, again, this is just an example, but the Litchfield HRA in developing the project, you know, they might say, well, it would be great if we could project-based some of our vouchers for this development. And so that would then be a collaboration of those two organizations, talking about that and working together. So yes, and they might even find, I mean, in these type of projects, you can have co-general partners and owners, you know, so that those potentially will be the conversations those two groups will have with each other, you know, as part of the process. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have some additional, and as far as the EDA goes, I would say, you know, the funding mechanism is what we're involved with. I mean, we don't get into any of the other construction pieces of the project. So I mean, as far as the funding goes, we're okay with that. I would, that hundred and fifteen thousand for land acquisition, is that all the lot? Are they planning on buying like all five lots now, or in your presentation, or?
The HRAs, or with, I'm sorry, with the Habitat's five lots?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the HRAs?
Of total financing needs is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which includes land acquisition costs of a hundred and fifteen and soft costs of twenty. Is that?
So that's just one parcel. So the HRAs project is just one parcel, piece of land?
Okay.
Yep, that they would acquire, and that is, the acquisition cost is that hundred and fifteen thousand. And then the soft costs would be the cost they would have for legal expenses, if they had to do any kind of appraisal surveys, initial architectural fees that they would maybe have in some of that design work, would be some of those costs that they have. In terms of the Habitat for Humanity, they're buying, they'll buy five lots over the course of five years.
Okay, that's a separate deal.
Yep.
So is the, I mean, I take it this hundred and fifteen thousand, this is more than just your average city?
Yes, it is a site large enough to accommodate a multifamily development. Right.
Alright, that was the only thing.
Yeah, the site provides, and that's a really good question, because, you know, they have not, they have not decided exactly the design and what they want to put on that site, but the site is large enough, it would allow them to maybe do a townhome design where they could have, you know, three, ten-unit townhomes attached. It's large enough that they could do a thirty, forty-unit project. So it provides, the site provides them a lot of flexibility from a design standpoint to be able to get the project that they want, because there's enough land in it.
Alright.
Yep.
That was my question as well.
So they would have to probably subdivide it though, so that each lot was separate for these townhomes?
They could do it as one project.
They could. Okay.
Yep. And I'm not necessarily saying to, again, they haven't decided if they're going to do a townhome design versus an apartment design. That's, they're just, this opportunity really arose for them, for the land, that it's a perfect site, that has sewer and water, so it has all the city infrastructure, so then they don't have a lot of added costs there. So again, it provides them flexibility in what they could put on the site, but that'll be some of the work that they'll do over this course of the next year is for them to talk with their board about what kind of a project do we want? How many units do we want to develop? What do we want it to look like? It'd have to meet the city's zoning requirements that they have and such. Yep.
Mr. Chair, and maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't. I have some questions about Habitat for Humanity, so. They determine, how do they determine who's going to be eligible for these homes? It's obviously not low income, because you're looking at a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar home. They have to make the payments on that eventually, do they not, or am I missing something?
Nope, correct. So what they do is they have an application process where households apply, and then they conduct that analysis to figure out, you know, what is their income level? What can they afford for a payment? There are some funds, some mortgage funds through like rural development and other resources that provide like low-interest-rate mortgage products. So they do figure out what is an affordable mortgage payment for that household. So they have to be able to afford the payment before they go into it. But some of these resources, you know, they might also have, again, there's the volunteer labor aspect, you know, so they work to price the home at kind of to ensure that the household's paying no more than thirty percent of their income, you know, kind of that affordability standard that they have.
So it's not directed to low-income people?
It is. I mean, they have income restrictions.
How much is eighty percent of the median, if you know?
I didn't grab the income requirements, but that, I can get you some of that information. But again, you know, those would be people that might be working, you know, twenty-five, thirty-dollar-an-hour jobs potentially could be at that eighty percent or less level.
So is there a committee or something that decides who's going to get these homes, or?
So Habitat has a board, right, that they kind of work with as well on that selection process. So we wouldn't have anything to do, you know, with any of that selection process. Habitat has all of their applications, requirements, all of that process set up as to how they vet households through the process to ensure that. And then there's requirements that the households have to participate in the build, provide so many kind of sweat equity hours as well.
Has EDA done anything with Habitat for Humanity before?
We have not, so it's our first time collaborating together. They've done a lot of work in the Wilmer area, and their new director is really interested in ensuring that they're serving all of their coverage area, because they are Habitat of West Central, so they cover multiple counties, and that's really one of her goals, is to ensure they're reaching out beyond just Candy Ojai County.
So the forty-five thousand dollars would come back within five years?
Correct.
To answer that question about, to answer that question about AMI, eighty percent of AMI for a four-person household in Meeker County is just shy of seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that is from the two thousand twenty-four data.
And you said these are twelve-hundred-square-foot houses?
Roughly a thousand, yeah, a thousand eight to twelve hundred.
So they're, so the twelve-hundred-square-foot house and two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, they're about two thirty-four per square foot in build cost, which is pretty close to. Yeah. Because that's, you know, you start thinking, okay, build cost includes everything. What about the sweat equity? How does that filter in? But.
I guess, we'll go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do they, do you know if Habitat Humanity has applicants that are qualified for this at this point? Or that's a process they still need to go through?
I think that's a process they still need to go through, because they want to ensure, like, they have all the funding secured, and then they'll start that process.
My concern is we've had some assistance till, I believe it's Number One, out in the Maple Leaf Lane area, and there's a house that they built that has been sitting there for over a year, looking for a buyer in this price range. And so my concern would be finding a household that could afford that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar mortgage. I mean, if it's less than that, maybe better, but I know we've already helped fund that, and it's still vacant and has been for over a year. So that is a concern that I would have, although it's exciting to see new builds in town. I appreciate that.
My concern is who we're helping here. Maybe I just need to learn more about Habitat for Humanity. I don't have any issue with HRA, because I know, you know, that's some really low-income people that need to live somewhere, and I know they have a waiting list, but. So maybe the answer, I mean, I'm going to go along with whatever, but it just doesn't seem like what I thought this money should be directed for, but that's just me. Maybe sometime we should have a presentation on Habitat for Humanity, just because.
Sure.
At a work session.
At a work session. Might be interesting. So that's all I have.
Do you have any more questions of Lisa? Otherwise, I'd be looking to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the commitment of forty-five thousand in SAHA funding for Habitat Humanity of West Central Minnesota as a zero percent deferred loan for a five-year term, and ninety-five thousand for Litchfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority as a grant.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Now, discussion? Any further? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Lisa.
You do a good job of explaining everything. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I'm sure, and again, you know, in regards to your question on Habitat, they would be more than happy.
Yeah, it might be a good thing. I have some real questions about some of those. Thank you.
And we haven't done work with them before, so it'd be good.
Yeah.
We'll reach out and schedule a time.
We're going to put a nail apron on you and give you a hammer.
I'll have you know, I already helped him with some painting a few years ago.
Yeah, good thought. I won't be anywhere near.
Well, we did mission work a lot of times in other communities, but I mean, a lot of times they'd have a Habitat house that they'd help with for a week or whatever.
Morning, Greg.
Morning. Big Schultz Land Use Director. This morning, I got two items for your board. First item is the final plat of the Esperance Edition. Proper has made a application for a final plat, a three-lot plat called the Esperance Edition. Three lots, one lot will be four acres, lot two will be four point oh one acres, lot three will be four acres. This total parcel is thirty point five acres, of which twelve acres will be, twelve point oh one acres will be platted. The remainder of the eighteen acres will remain agriculture. This final plat has not changed in any survey, any boundaries since the preliminary plat that you voted on previously.
Questions for Greg?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the final plat for the three-lot plat of Esperance Edition, located in part of the southeast, one-fourth of the southeast, one-fourth of Section twenty-four Township, one-nineteen, Range twenty-nine, and Vassal Township.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Enjoy your new home.
Congratulations, Steve.
Next item I have is concrete ready-mix plant located up in Forest City Township. This property is owned by a Les Loft. It's an intermuse permit one-six-five-seven-zero. Plant will consist of an eighty-by-twenty building to house mixing operations with a building, a batching hopper for sand and rock distribution, conveyor, dust collector, weighing system. Outside of this building will be two batching hoppers, approximately seventy feet in height for the distribution of cement and fly ash. Materials for this production of the cement will come from the aggregate pit that has approximately four hundred feet to the north, as you see on the map. Majority of those aggregate materials, almost all of them will be coming from that pit. So it's a very, transportation won't be an issue for getting materials from the pit to the actual plant itself. Operation, once it gets up and running, will be employ about ten to fifteen employees, utilizing eight trucks. Hours of operation will be running through Friday, five-thirty to six P.M., and Saturday, six A.M. to one P.M., weather permitting. During the public hearing on this site, no one from the audience responded, so no objections at all, so.
So Greg, why is this familiar? Didn't you do a concrete?
Yes, last year, in two thousand twenty-four, you did one south of the river.
Okay.
It was the south of Highway twenty-four for Albany Ready Mix.
Oh, okay, okay.
Apparently the financing or something had fallen through or something, so they.
So that one.
Pulled the trigger on that. Then after that, Les is, he's going to start a plant on his property, since there shouldn't be any competition from the Albany Ready Mix that was going to come in last year.
I thought that was, you know, the whole sound event was familiar.
I didn't hear the last thing you said. Competition, what?
There shouldn't be any competition from Albany Ready Mix. That pulled the permit last year, but they let their permit expire last year. It's over a year already, so that permit expired. They have no intentions of coming into Meeker County at this time, as last year they did.
Questions for Greg?
No, I've been by the site. I know where it is, but I don't see, if there's no objections in the neighborhood, not sure how he pulled that off, but.
Not sure either, but it did.
I'm kidding. I don't, I'm not looking for any. I mean, I think there's also a need for a plant, too. There's none.
There's, there's no concrete plant in Meeker County anyway, so. Very much a need for the construction industry that's local.
So just curious, the out of, in and out of that site, is that a township road?
Yes. It is township road.
Okay. And they had no, no comment, no nothing?
They didn't. We have the conditions that they'll have to repair that if it gets damaged.
Okay.
Over traffic.
Good.
Part of the conditions.
Good. Because those will be some heavy trucks rumbling across those roads. Any further questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Can I ask where this is actually located? I was trying to find it on Google Maps. I was like, I'm having a hard time.
Northeast of Forest City, about one point eight miles.
One point eight miles from east of?
North.
Northeast of Forest City?
As the crow flies about one point eight miles.
Okay. Gotcha. I don't know, I was just, I was really having a hard time finding that site, so like.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve interim use permit sixteen-five-seventy to operate a concrete ready-mix plant within the A-one Agricultural Preservation District in part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section nine Township one-twenty, Range thirty, in Forest City Township, with the conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Van Art. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Those same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, two quick items for you today. The first is approval of an agreement with the Humane Society of Candy, Ohio, and Meeker Counties. We've had an agreement with, uh, the Humane Society for several years, um, since two thousand nine, to provide certain services for the community, including, uh, space for stray animals. They also conduct low-cost spay and neuter and vaccine clinics within Meeker County. The agreement guarantees space for animals that are coming from Meeker County, uh, within the Humane Society. As part of that, we have historically made, um, a contribution in appropriation, uh, to cover that, the costs associated with that. Uh, and it was based on a sliding scale, based on the number of animals that were brought in from the previous year. And what that did is it created, um, a fair amount of uncertainty and kind of big swings one year to the next for both the Humane Society and for the county. So, uh, as part of the budget process last year, uh, we recognized the fact that this agreement was, um, expiring at the end of the year. And there was a desire to continue, uh, working with them, but also have a, a new and updated agreement. So, per the direction of the county board last year, we, um, negotiated a new agreement with the, uh, Humane Society. It is for a two-year term. Each year includes a two-and-a-half-percent increase on the previous year's appropriation, uh, which provides, uh, certainty for both us and for them. We know how to budget for it, uh, each year. Uh, and then also includes a, a new provision where, um, you know, one of the, the main concerns that the Humane Society had was the costs associated with coming to Meeker County to, to pick up animals that are at the impound, uh, that is run by the city of Litchfield. Uh, so the new, uh, agreement includes a provision that, uh, they would charge the county fifty dollars each time they do it. Uh, and that way their, their costs are being covered, but we're also not paying, um, a, a larger flat fee to cover costs that, um, you know, may not be incurred if it's not happening as frequently as maybe it did in the past. Additionally, there was some concern that was raised by the county board with regard to, um, contributions from other counties that are not members of the Humane Society, uh, to cover costs related to animals that are, um, coming from their county. So, we had a meeting with, um, representatives from their board, uh, and representatives from the, the other partner entities, Wilmer and Candy, Ohio County, to talk about some strategies for that. And I know Beth can talk more about some of the work that their board has done to, to address those things. So, with that, uh, we've addressed each of the issues that the county board raised when we were talking about this. Uh, one other thing has come up through our negotiation, which is that we recognize that, uh, Humane Society is not able to meet the insurance limits that are recommended by M C I T. However, uh, in our review, we believe that the risk to the county is relatively low for that, uh, so our recommendation is to approve the agreement. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Andrew, one of the things we also discussed during this was, like, a contribution is made by the county. What about the city of Litchfield? Do they actively?
They currently do not.
What's that?
They currently do not make a contribution.
Mr. Chair, our plan is to have a discussion with them about, they, they, they keep the dogs for the holding period. There's some conditions that our director would like to see changed there. We've been waiting for this agreement. And she and I will probably meet with Dave and the mayor down the line here, actually.
Thank you.
At Wilmer, at Candy, Candy has a contribution as well as Wilmer, but they have a lot more animals than us, obviously, so. The thing about the shelters right now, there's a lot of strays, a lot of people dropping animals. It's, there's, we're still struggling financially, so it's good to get, good to get this contract done. I'm happy to see that, so.
Do you have any insight on, uh, potentially how you will get cooperation from surrounding counties that are using the facility that are not contributing?
So it's been a topic for a long time.
Quite a while.
We've approached commissioners, we've gotten voted down. You know, I've said, don't accept them. They leave them at the door. You don't know who left them. People are just, you know, it's what they do. So, Craig, you can come in here. I think the Candy, Ohio Administrator suggested we start out with a small amount towards spray, spay and neuter.
Yep.
Neuter or something. We're gonna send some letters out, right, and see if we can just get some cash from them to serve them. If they don't commit, is that about what we talked about?
That was the suggestion that was raised. Yeah, I've talked with, um, Commissioner Steve Gardner from Candy, Ohio County a bit as well after that. And he had said that that was something that they were, that their board was starting to take a look at.
I mean, we always try, but Renville, for instance, we get quite a few from there, you know. We're, we're the benefactor of part of a farm down there now, so that's money that's coming in from Renville. We've also had some of that from Meeker County, so there's that. So, we, we just have to work on it. That's what we can do, so. In toward getting some money. When people don't have to, they don't always.
Do we have?
Sorry.
Do we, do we have cameras on this? Are, are there cameras on the site so they can see who's dropping these animals up?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Is that any kind of a deterrent?
No.
No? Okay.
I will tell you that over in Hutchinson, they found, in their shelter, they found an animal almost dead that somebody had put in a storage shed that they hardly ever go into, but happened to go in, in there, uh, and found the, the animal, so people are irresponsible. You know, I guess it's better than dropping them in the country, but not much, so, you know.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Andrew, do you remember what we plugged in the budget for twenty-five?
We plugged in this amount.
This is what we?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The nice thing now is we'll know we don't have to depend, and the fifty dollars, we look back, they aren't having to pick.
We had a, we had a much higher number of animals pri- pre- uh, prior to COVID.
Yeah.
Now it's significantly less, which is where we felt it was to our advantage to pay on a per occurrence basis rather than increase the base amount, based on a.
And part of what the city does is they provide a space for us to keep them for their holds. There's just some improvements we're hoping they'll make out there. People go out and walk and say, you know, they're not, they like everything.
Oh, that.
Out at the, so they do provide that for us, and I believe they pay for the food.
Yep.
To feed them and stuff, so Litchfield does contribute some.
Well, and, and just from a budgetary standpoint, we are gonna have to, I don't know if we gotta get ahead in front of these county boards or whatever and talk to these commissioners, cause there's definitely some agents, or counties.
We've done that. When you see them at your meetings, put the pressure. I, I think if a person went public, maybe that would make.
Well, and I, that's what I'm, that's the angle I'm going. I think it's commissioner to commissioner is where we're gonna, it's different for the, the, uh, shelter board.
Now, if the police, if the police bring them, I think they pay something, don't they? We bill some of the, if the police have to bring them, I believe.
Yes.
That we bill the county.
It, the, the issue is residents from that county who are coming and dropping them up. We have a number of residents from Meeker County who go and drop animals off directly. Owner surrenders or animals that they find, um, which is why we have much fewer coming from our impound going over there, or not our impound, Litchfield's impound.
They take them.
Going to over there. Exactly. But, but that's the issue, and, you know, so.
So, my question is, how does that even work in terms of, you know, strays? I mean, if there's a concern about a dog and somebody calls and the sheriff comes or something, do they even pick them up and bring them to somewhere? And do they have, like?
There's a set, there's a, so many day hold they put on them. They don't go on Facebook. You know, if you're ever missing an animal, call the sheriff's department first.
Do they check, like, if they, if they're chipped at all? Is there, they have the?
Sure, yeah.
They have the means to do that and then?
If it's a dangerous dog, they lock them up for so long till it goes to court or whatever.
Right.
The runs are not cohesive to us going and getting the dog and putting them down if they have to be put down. So, we recommend sometimes that maybe it would be better if the owner would take them to the vet and have it done, with a witness or whatever. So, there's a whole bunch of stuff involved, and it depends on the circumstance. I think that we pick up less strays out in the country because I've heard that we pick them up. Dog, apparently dogs roam a little bit in the country, and then somebody feels bad for the dog, picks them up and takes them in. They call the sheriff. He won't always pick them up because then, then they call him and say, why did you take my dog? So, it's kind of a catch-twenty.
Then they're done that.
Yeah, there you go, so you know. They roam a little, yeah.
Somebody comes along and picks them up, hauls them into Litchfield, and I gotta pay whatever.
Poor dog.
Fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks a day or whatever it is, yeah, so.
And kick them in the tail.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I, I was wondering, too, I think, is it Maple Lake? There's, I know, right, county, uh, site, too. And I was just wondering how some of these other counties or entities operate.
I don't know.
On taking into, you know, yeah.
I mean, it's hard, it would be very hard to tell somebody we're not gonna take that animal. That wouldn't, I couldn't do it. I mean, it would be tough. Our staff isn't gonna do that. They have an animal and need they, they take it.
Cause I know, right, you have to pay a fee.
Yeah.
Right, when you're gonna drop your dog, I mean, it's.
And here, too, if you, if you're gonna just, well, but, you know, we've started the spay and neuter program that you can do that cheaper. That's the secret to most of it, particularly the cats, that everybody complains about so much, you know. If you qualify, you can take it in, and, and we have a program we're using for fifty dollars. You can bring in those spay and neuter markets, even if it's a feral or whatever. And then they give them their shot and do something with their ears so you know they've been done, and they take them back and let them loose. The cat population is overwhelming here, Candy, all over, and that's the only way you're gonna stop that, so. But it'll be good to get this done because it's been on the agenda for three, four months, so.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, if there's no more questions, I'll move to approve an agreement, oops, with the Humane Society of Candy and Meeker Counties for services related to stray animals.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carries. Andrew, it's still yours.
Yes, the second item that I have is approval changes to the job description for the county treasurer, uh, with Sharon's retirement coming up, uh, here in August to give us an opportunity to take a look at this position and determine, uh, you know, whether or not we should make any, uh, changes to it. So, met with the personnel committee and then ultimately the co- uh, class and comp committee. And, uh, one of the kind of major discussions that we had is, uh, is the title county treasurer an accurate representation of what the position does? Several years ago, uh, the county went through a reorganization process where a lot of the financial duties that were under the county auditor were moved under the county treasurer and kind of created that office more as a finance department than what it had been in the past. There's been a number of counties that have, uh, created finance director, finance manager, uh, positions. We reviewed, uh, job descriptions from Clay, Fillmore, Malax, and Renville counties, uh, and each of them had, um, titles were similar to those. So, uh, as a result of that review, um, we, we made some tweaks to the, uh, to the job description, um, all of which are existing duties that are already, the position's already doing. They're just, um, not clearly outlined in there. We wanted to make sure we had clarification on that. And then the other change was changing the title to finance director. The office will still be called the treasurer's office, but it'll be run by the finance director. Uh, so with that, the recommendation is that, uh, the updated job description be approved. And after it is, we will, uh, begin recruiting for this position so that we can hopefully have someone in place with some time for them to, um, you know, cross-train a little bit with Sharon before her retirement. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Andrew. Uh, we did discuss this in personnel and at great length. We, I, I'm not gonna speak for Beth. I support the changes. I think they're good. I think they better reflect the position as it is today.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Sure would entertain one.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an updated job description for the county treasurer and retitling the position as finance director.
We have a motion by Com- Commissioner Van Oort. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just, yeah, I, uh, obviously Sharon's been with us a long time, so we haven't had this opportunity to address this for quite some time. And, uh, I think, yeah, it's just the process we need to go through it as she retires and, and. But the appointments of the auditor and the treasurer position and that change over the last couple of years, this is just timely and, and, uh, an opportunity to bring things up to date.
In addition to that, we, we did discuss, uh, at great length, is there any possible way to consolidate or change things to become more efficient, more cost-effective? But, um, because of the duties, I think we all agree that this position needed to stand alone. Would I be correct in saying that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but.
I didn't say you said that. Any further discussion?
Well, and that, and to that point, to the efficiency piece, too, there might, uh, I think there's, there's avenues in other departments that, but we can't, uh, bring this one into, but I mean, I think for this position, we're in good shape. And then, uh, there might be some other efficiencies as we move forward here, too, some other changes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an updated job description of the county treasurer and retitling the position as finance director.
We already have a motion.
We already have a motion.
Sorry, I said, did we do all that? Who did it?
Just haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Schmidt's second.
I missed it completely. Apologies.
We're in the discussion portion.
I was trying to get you to your funeral.
Not his funeral.
Not his funeral, but soon. We never discussed it, we never discussed this much at length after the motion, so I was confused. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries.
Yes.
Yes.
Wow, I missed it, Cheryl. I apologize.
I'm so sorry. I'll try to be.
I think this is the earliest we've gone off the rails. Quick report for you today, uh, really good news. Uh, as you recall from our, I think it was our last work session, um, it was the one before, where we were talking about the Family Resource Center and the fact that we were pursuing a grant with the Sauer Family Foundation to do some of the exploratory work surrounding that. Earlier this week, uh, we were, um, given notice that we were awarded a sixty-thousand-dollar grant, uh, to do that work.
Nice.
Uh, so in the coming weeks, what you'll see in front of you is a contract from H H S with a consultant to, to assist us with that process. And then there'll be some money that's, uh, associated with that to help cover some of the staff time associated with it, too. So, good news there. Uh, great work to, um, Kirsten Langerman, our, uh, child protection supervisor and her team who did the work on developing that grant. We have, uh, our strategic planning interviews with all of you next week. Uh, after the meeting today, I'll be sending out the questions for you to take a look at and start to ponder. And then we're starting to work on scheduling our, our day-long planning session that'll include the department heads and all of you. So, of course, when we try and get as many people together as we want to get together, it's always a challenge, so we'll, uh, we sent out some dates yesterday and, um, we're gonna look at some other dates as well. Uh, as a reminder, uh, Boys and Girl County Day is next week, uh, so they will be meet, I'm sorry, in two weeks. I only think of board meetings. The weeks in between are not real to me. In two weeks, on April fifteenth is Boys and Girls County Day, uh, and that will be, um, an opportunity for, uh, all of us to, um, you know, have lunch with the, the middle schoolers and talk with them about the great work that the county does and encourage them to think about public service as a career. We are having our open house at this building in three weeks, on April twenty-second, four-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, we are including information about that in the newsletter. Uh, we've sent it out to all of the media contacts as well. And we're sending, um, direct invitations to a number of, um, folks who've been involved with the county over the years, uh, and particularly involved with this project. Past commissioners, uh, people who serve on our boards and committees. And so our goal is to get a lot of the public to come into this building. It's gonna focus on the public-facing areas. Uh, we're not gonna bring people back through, um, you know, the offices and whatnot. But, uh, we also want to use the opportunity to have, uh, folks be able to learn a little bit about the work that our departments do here, so.
We can get on Newsmaker ahead of there.
That is a good idea. We will work to get on Newsmaker. If only there's someone who could get us, who could get us on that schedule. And then, uh, the last item I have is, um, I'm gonna be out of the office next Thursday and Friday at, uh, Administrator's, uh, spring conference, so that's all I have.
Um, I'm gonna just say a couple of things and then I'm gonna excuse myself and hand the gavel to, um, Beth. I, I would just wanna remind our new commissioners of a couple of things. Um, it's a great opportunity with these kids to tell them why we do what we do, why, why our interest in, in being in county government and the important role they could play, uh, if they take either a role like us or if they take one of our positions that are open. Uh, so it's a great opportunity to, to talk to these folks. And then one other thing, um, uh, I was out at Forest City this past Sunday, and it reminded me that commissioners, and this is more for you two, in the summer for the, uh, threshing show generally take a turn at selling tickets. And also assisting at the county fair with bingo. Uh, our Mr. Letson has become a seasoned caller.
You know how sometimes you volunteer for something, then you never get out of it again?
It's only five letters.
And it still isn't always easy, Steve.
But with that, that's all I have, uh, I am going to excuse myself at this time to head for a funeral. Thank you all, and thank you Beth for allowing us to change that, um, possibly change that.
No problem. See that mountain over there, I'll move it for you, Paul.
Eight thirty on Thursday, eight thirty Thursday, unless there's weather, we might have to go.
Sure, I'll talk to you before then. Drive careful, alright. Steve, do you wanna go next on the uh?
Yeah.
I can do.
Update?
Some things here. Oh, uh, committee updates, um, I've been sitting on the. Eleven fifteen reentry services, uh, they're eleven fifteen is the rules on on guidelines for re- uh reentering people who've been incarcerated, reentering the workforce and. And uh civilian life, if you will, and there's been some adjustments, some things, a lot of good discussion. That's an ongoing committee that I'll be sitting on, I I don't know how long until we get through everything, but. That one and also the the uh twenty-nine eleven rules is the one for the for safety and uh of incarcerated individuals that we have in our jails, uh twenty-nine eleven. There has been some changes, I mean, there was a lot of proposed changes, Brandy knows about sheriff as well. There has been some adjustments to that, um, and mainly from law enforcement. And the guy who's running the jails versus some of the legislation that was pushed down. So there has been some movement in a, in a call of positive direction on that. Uh, what else did we have? We had a AMC Zoom meeting, um, kind of legislative update, and I talked to Andrew a little bit about this yesterday. You know, it seems like I've talked about budgets, county budgets more this year than I have. You know, we usually don't talk about budget till June and it's, that's all we talk about now at AMC. And every time something gets proposed, it's worse than the last. And you know, our most recent one, you know, they're looking at a five million dollar cut um to AIS program. They're looking at a million dollars cut from the county feedlot program, another million from county ag inspections. Eight million from uh, uh, riparian protection aid for uh lakes and stuff. Pilt, they're gonna cut a bunch of money from pilt payments, payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, cannabis aid is on the list, I mean, and we don't even have some of this stuff in play yet, and they're already cutting aid for it. You know, latest projection um that I've seen was they wanna cut two hundred, shift two hundred million dollars into county government in this year. And three hundred and fifty-one million next year, so the next couple of years are. Julie Ring the other day actually said this is the first time she's heard counties talk about insolvency. Some of these counties, uh, when you get up, I think Bell Trammy, just the pilt shift alone was gonna be a nineteen percent increase in Bell, Bell Trammy's levy. Just that projection right now. Obviously, there's some things at play um until the end of the session, but um the biggest concerns are that um, you know. The Republican Party with the balance in the House, that that even there's not a lot of new stuff can get passed, but there also isn't much that they can change from the past. So, as these budgets come out and as we go here, it's gonna become more reality, um, what these shifts are actually gonna look like. And um, I think when I came on the board, our ten-year average was like a three point one percent uh levy increase. And it hasn't been above that since I've been on, we've been sub, sub three or right at.
Two point nine is our five-year average.
Yeah, so we're, we're hanging, and I don't, I mean, we might be lucky to be at ten, I hate to say that.
Based on, based on the cost shifts that we had seen before, um, you know. Eight to ten is probably realistic, uh, as we look at um the cost shifts plus just our normal increase and things that we need to do.
Combined with our.
Plus, um.
What we have.
Plus the the new mandate of um paid family leave, that that we're gonna have to start paying for.
I thought they were gonna get that changed. Are they working on that?
That paid family leave is one of the priorities that um, you know, Representative Dave Baker from Candy Hill County has been working on, he's the chair of that, he's the co-chair of that workforce committee that is working on that. He has some things that he's working on related to it, but you know, looking at delay or canceling, that's not gonna happen. Just politically, it's not gonna happen. There's tweaks that will likely occur, uh, and some of those I think are gonna be favorable and things that we have been, um, our our association has been pushing for. But, you know, it's not gonna be a wholesale delay.
Well, we're gonna have to, I mean, we're gonna have to make some rough decisions here. We can't just decide that we're gonna raise everything ten percent, because I'm getting phone calls this year about valuations and, you know. I don't know if the rest of you are, but some people were a little surprised, I think, when they opened their envelopes, so.
Well, and I, on valuations, I always caution people, I mean, valuations is a part of the equation, but it's not, doesn't necessarily. You could have your valuation go up and your taxes go down too, it it could, but. But it is a concern, I understand.
Absolutely, so that's what I'm saying, so we're gonna have to, as a group, decide what we're not gonna cover anymore.
For sure, I I I think that what we need to do first is we need, so the the House and Senate um targets came out this last week. Uh, they are obviously very high level for each of the committees, they don't get into specific programs like the governor's budget has. We don't know exactly what those committees are gonna come up with yet, we need to see what the state's final budget looks like. They're also vastly different from what the House and the Senate have as far as targets. So they need to come together and and develop universal targets and then they, which we should hopefully see in the next couple of weeks. And then the committees have to do their work of actually appropriating and and developing the full budget. Once we know exactly what that looks like and what we're actually playing with, then um, that is when we are at the top point of starting our budget process and departments are putting that together. Uh, we've already been talking about as a department head team, how this is going to be a challenging year. And that we need to be thinking creatively about things that um, that we could be doing to help mitigate that. It, we're, the the plan is certainly not just, you know, blinders on, we're not worried about what the state does, we're going full force ahead of what we want to do. But we're also not being overly reactionary at this point, because we don't know exactly what it's gonna work on.
And I just wanted to get that out to the full board, that the the conversations are are not pleasant to be sitting in, um, as when it comes to budgeting. I I did a testimony last week on uh, again, on Armor Radios, this time in the Senate. And that, this is just a small grant program, basically two, two million dollars a year for both years of the biennium. To upgrade Armor Radios, it's the same one that I testified in the House for. Grove City Care had that meeting last night, um, they continue to do a good job over there. They are serving, in March, they they uh senior dining, they did about three hundred and fifteen meals. And they serve about sixty clients in their foot care clinic. And actually starting to be kinda the, almost too busy in some aspects there. Uh, they had a health expo on Wednesday, March thirteenth, they had about thirty vendors, um, you know, your acumen's and different health agencies. Uh, they had about a hundred and thirty people attend that, and they do do that at Trinity Lutheran Church there. So they got a good partnership with the church and the and the care center. And continue to do a good job there. Um, last, then I went up to uh, we had our AMC board meeting at the end of the leadership uh, uh, last week. Their leadership training up and, that we had, it was uh Scott Welly, who was actually a Albany uh native. And he, the leadership training, uh, his book here outperformed Norm. He's got little leadership books, um, he's actually gonna, he found out just last week that he's gonna be on a Ted, he gets to do a TED Talk. Coming up, so he was kinda excited about that, nervous, it's, he's an interesting guy, he had a stuttering speech problem and stuff and talks about how he overcame. And, you know, what he's doing now, he said he would have never, he's a young guy, four, about, young forty.
Pretty young at my age.
Not quite.
Thank, thank you, Steve.
So, uh.
Don't be a smartypat.
So anyway, it was a good conference and uh, and then of course, the the, at the end, we had the board meeting, there was a lot of talk. Things that are happening legislatively and most of them are not very friendly towards county government, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve, Darren?
Um, uh, a week or so ago, was that the MAP meeting, the Minnesota Area Partners in Prevention? I was a little surprised because they were a different place and so I, but it was a big, big group, it was, I was kind of impressed with the number of people who were there. And they did a process where we had a lot more discussion in terms of just some of the different particular needs. And uh, how we can, they can be addressed, which was really good. As well as they had a um, uh, a speaker came in and she, I think she's got the the, it's to be continued from Glencoe, I wanna say? Cause I just drove by their, her building the other day. And um, but that was really good until we had the fire alarm. That uh, went went off and sent us all outside for a little bit, but it was, it was still a real positive meeting, I thought, that we. We were, we were really kinda getting down to what we're there for, which was nice to see, so that was, that was pretty positive. I did attend the Zoom um, um, county providing technology meeting, which was, um, yeah, it was a Zoom and I was like. It it was not super helpful, cause I had kinda no idea what they were talking about for a lot of stuff, and they were kinda talking about some facility kinds of things that I wasn't really clued in on. But um, I'm pretty sure that, because Paul was gone for that meeting, so they had a, um, the his um vice was running it. But uh, I'm sure if we have any questions about CPT, we'll ask Paul and not me. Then uh, did the emergency services board meeting, and Steve was testifying on Thursday before the Senate. And um, that was another one of those, um, there's a whole lot of acronyms and.
Public safety.
But it was, it was, you know, but we we maintained our presence and kept up our numbers, so that was positive. But it was also interesting just, just hearing, um, these guys have been doing this a long time. The 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 St. Cloud guys?
MICA.
Yeah.
MICA's phenomenal.
They just, you know, and at the same time, it's like, I was still trying to figure out so many things because they did the meeting and then they did the training. And, you know, training was okay too, but that was kinda just a lot of just uh PD, you know, um, PowerPoint stuff that that went through. But uh, I, you know, that they, and that was all really a lot having to do with the Armor Radios and and how the whole system works in terms of emergency services. But again, I've still got a lot more to learn, and if we have any questions on that, Steve's the guy to ask. Then um, I got a a call on the aquatic invasive species meeting that um I I wasn't informed about. Apparently, I missed the uh, I wasn't included on the email, but I got a call and I zipped over and it was fine. They had some things ready and it was, it was um, more informational, I don't think we really made any movement forward to many things. We kinda reported on the concerns about the the decrease in the budgets. And then they went over, there was two budget proposals that quite frankly, weren't particularly dissimilar. And so it was, um, so I think just, we just need to continually um be aware of the whole issue of the aquatic invasive species. And um, um, is it Ariana? Yeah, you know, and she, I think she's got a pretty good handle on everything. And then I know Cheryl and I went to the joint ditch meeting in Glencoe. We were there with Barb and Phil. And was there anybody else?
Oh, was it Holly?
Oh, yeah, Barb, Phil and Holly, so we were all represented there. And then we weren't, there was a lot of other things going on with that, much more than we had going on. So, yeah, but that was an interesting one, just to see that they they don't meet. They were, we're talking about moving a meeting to December, um, something like that, so.
Is that a question?
Well, I was, no, the question was what month they were, they were looking to do it at, because they were gonna move it.
December, that sounds like a question.
Anyway, um, so I'm not sure what they decided, they scheduled it, but they hadn't fully decided if that's the the route they were gonna go. Right, Cheryl, I think.
They, there is some uh consideration of how um, of the billing process uh for joint ditch situations. And so that had, was a reasoning of why they would move that to December rather than the spring, so.
Yeah, cause they were gonna go by the particular ditch or watershed as opposed to the.
Right, it's complicated.
Yeah, it really was, it was, it was, I'm glad, you know, they pretty much have it figured out, so. That, that's all I've got.
Okay, and just, yeah, um, do you want me to go ahead? Just to to uh piggyback on that joint ditch meeting, um, we just listened to each one of the counties' uh budgets and their projects.
Right.
And, and there is some concern about, about uh billing, but also, um, all the counties are connected. And so if Renville, you know, everyone has to be represented, and so there's some concern about changing that billing structure. But um, we, as you noted, we're very small partner uh in, in the joint ditch. We have very small um expenses, so. Um, I also went to the Pioneer Land um Finance Committee meeting, and we looked at the budget and the current expenses and receipts and as usual. Um, I did uh attend the UCAT meeting for Paul, various department reports. One of the highlights is the um shelter in, emergency shelter in Wilmer, um, that's near Woodland, is eight units and it's nearly complete. They expect it to be um running uh, end of the spring, early summer. Their finances are on track, um, they are moving now their meetings from Zoom to in person, and the next one will be in Redwood Falls. Also attended HR meeting, again, they just approved all their finances, their spending, and they are on track. I did note that um, there's a, they serve, uh, there's a, an amount of people that they serve each month. Um, it was fifty and now it's down into the the forties, and I asked about that. And that is um simply because uh expenses are rising and so they can serve fewer people than they have been able to serve in in the past. And that is all I have, thank you.
On that joint ditch, I'd just make a quick comment, um, and I think we missed a year or two there maybe, or at least I did. But it's, it's good, yeah, they basically go through projects and things that are going on, but um, and I don't know how long ago we started that project and and McCloud and. Who's on, McCloud, Sibley?
Renville.
Us, Renville. And uh, it's, I I think it's a good.
Right.
Good meeting, uh, but we don't do anything like that on the north side, so on the north side of the county, I feel like it, when I go there, it's a little out of my area. But um, I think it's, it's kind of a annual.
Eject quorum, so we.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, we've been doing it for a while, but it's, it's good, it serves a purpose, so.
Anything else? So, I didn't have, I'd Woodland, um, and we just had that presentation, so we're having the same struggles with re-enrollment. And uh, people's a bit Medicaid uh patients that, um, I guess we're getting some help with navigators, trying to get people where they need to be. There's just a lot of confusion since COVID about they got re-enrolled and they didn't and don't realize they're not and. So, more to come on that, I guess. I also, um, as I'm chair of the CHB this year, and I received a email, um, I don't know, last week one day from Kaiser. That the remain, all remaining COVID funds have been terminated immediately. So for uh CHB that, and I think we were supposed to get a hundred and. So, for CHB, that, and I think we were supposed to get 100, another $100,000 in funding that we're not going to get fortunately or unfortunately. It was, we were using ours to distribute vaccine mailers to every household across three counties. And also, we were going to host a Bridge Out of Poverty event in Meeker County, so they probably won't be having that now. But I also got from other, a couple of other ones that COVID funds, which I didn't know that COVID funds weren't done a while ago, so apparently they've been on the budget. So, I'm sure it's the first of many emails to come about that. With that, I didn't have much on any questions, any other business to come before us?